We'll get started and I'm going to call the Pen Ridge School Board meeting to order. And we'll start with a salute to the flag. So there's various flags, pick one and we'll salute. You're supposed to rise.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Republic. Nation.
And to this vote. All right, thank you. Chenoweth, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bennis Clemmons?
Here.
Mr. Cormac?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
I'm here.
Mr. Rice?
I am here.
Dr. Thompson?
Here.
And Mrs. Walters?
Here.
I see that Mrs. Cullen has joined us, so we'll count you as being here. All right, moving on to public comment. According to Policy 903, public comment, which is limited to three minutes, should be directed to the presiding officer rather than individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. Confidentiality and privacy rights, specific comments regarding particular individuals must be communicated privately to the school board and superintendent via email at PSD School Board at PenRidge.org. So with that, I will open it up to public comments.
Mrs. Miller, if you would unmute everyone, Mrs. Miller? And if there is any member of the public who would like to speak, please identify yourself and you'll be recognized by Mr. Kraus.
Okay, so in no takers, we will move on to the president's report. And I really don't have much to report since our last meeting was only two weeks ago. So I'm going to sidestep that and pass it off to Dr. Bolton for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus, I appreciate it. And thank you for everybody for coming out tonight. Obviously, we have been spending a lot of time planning how to best celebrate end of year traditions at all 11 of our schools. I've been really, really appreciative and thrilled that administrators, staff, parents, and even students have been working together to plan those special events for the end of the year, field days, art shows, yearbook distribution, award ceremony, and promotion events. The schools are getting to communicate what that will look like with obvious focus on the transition years of fifth, eighth, and 12th grade as well. So rightly so, our greatest efforts have been with the class of 2020. They are an amazing group of young men and women who deserve to be celebrated well. We have a team that consists of students, administrators, teachers, support staff, and parents that have been meeting regularly to plan various events and most recently have interacted with the graduation survey results that received almost 700 responses from our students and parents. I thought it would be appropriate to ask Dr. Shai, she's a member of that group, if she would provide an overview of some of the plans for the class of 2020 as well as a timeline for the communication with the community. So Dr. Shai, if you'd spend a few minutes, thank you.
It would be my pleasure. I just want to check with Mrs. Cullen to make sure there are no seniors in her house who are listening.
They are, I have earphones, so they can't hear you.
Very good, I just don't want to give away anything. So it's very exciting. Mr. Lebowski will be sending the information that I'm going to review with you tonight. That'll be sent out to seniors and their families this week. There are great people working on all of the committees and we know it's going to be awesome, we really do. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Cullen because she is on one of the committees. And we'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute. I'll start with this Friday, May 15. The Pen Ridge graduate lawn signs will be here. They will be delivered with caps and gowns to all of our graduates' homes. And we have over 90 staff volunteers to make those deliveries, so we're very excited about that. So woo-hoo, starts on Friday. Also on Friday, led by, excuse me, Callie Cooper, we will begin highlighting senior digital spotlights. They're really nice, they have pictures of the students with quotes and such, and they will be appearing on Facebook and Instagram. And I think we're doing 20 a day for 20 days. Callie, if there's anything else, you can pop in there. So we're excited about that. Mrs. Cullen and one of our teachers, Ms. O'Brien, they're leading the top 10% and senior awards dinner. That's going to be on May 28. And we have eight local restaurants who are donating the dinners to our top 10% seniors and we thank them very much. And we also thank Landis Market because they're going to be giving cake to each of the students. Volunteers who will be delivering the dinners, they're going to wear Pen Ridge gear and there's going to be decorations and we're going to try to make it and will make it very special. After the dinner, which is at 6 o'clock, approximately like 6:30-ish, the awards will actually, the award ceremony will take place, that's going to be hosted by Mr. Lebowski. And we do have our guest speaker, he's John T. Fox, he's a Pen Ridge grad, he's actually a professor at Lehigh University in the College of Engineering, so he will still be speaking to our seniors, so we're very excited about that. Sorry, I missed Mrs. Cullen?
No, I think that's a good synopsis of what we've done so far.
Thank you. All right, and then we're going to have on June 8th and 9th, rain date, I mean, yeah, June, June, the rain date is the 10th, it'll be drop off and pickup. That's going to be a big deal, this is where the students, all the seniors are going to be dropping off their laptops, books, and such, but they'll be picking up too. So they'll be picking up their yearbook and artwork and there's going to be, we hope this is what we're planning, a band playing and have student artwork and banners and teachers, administrator, and everybody out there cheering on our seniors, so we're really excited about that. In terms of the graduation, we hope to finalize the plans tomorrow, we have a meeting tomorrow, and once they're all finalized, they also will be part of that newsletter that will go out to seniors and their families this week. We're excited, we think those plans are going to be amazing. And last but not least, the prom. We are hoping for an August date at Pen Ridge High School. The senior executive officers are going to meet on the 14th. There's still going to be votes for king and queen and they're going to be talking about themes, whether or not they want to change them. So we have a lot going on and we are really excited about it. And it won't be what they expected, but it's going to be really fantastic. So I want to thank everybody who's been on the committees, truly been a wonderful experience working with the students, they're amazing, and our parents and the administrators and teachers. It's really been a fabulous effort, so thank you all.
Dr. Shai, thank you so much. It has been neat to watch the students interact with what are the, the expected traditions for the end of the senior year and for them to find neat ways to either replicate or edit those specially for them this year. So thank you for working so hard at making memories for the class of 2020. We're just really looking forward to the next month or so as we're able to celebrate that multiple times.
Oh, it's our pleasure, thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing to support us, we really do appreciate it.
So also tonight, the board is being asked to consider adoption of the 2020-2021 general fund final budget. Mr. Daubert and his team have worked really hard since our closure in March to reevaluate both the revenues and expenses to be able to be prepared for whatever the potential financial impact is of this closure. We are really confident that we're in a wonderful place financially, thank you to the work of this board as well as Mr. Daubert and his team. And we have positioned ourselves to react through the fall and the winter to whatever the academic data shows at Pen Ridge. I'm thrilled to announce that we've still been able to present a balanced budget tonight without tax increase for your consideration. If approved, it would mark the fourth consecutive year with no tax increase and the second consecutive year with no commitment of fund balance in the budget, which means it's not, there's no structural deficit within this budget for the second year in a row. So just thrilled for the possibility of being able to do that and I just have so much thanks for Mr. Daubert and his team. I've asked Mr. Daubert if he would just provide an overview of the budget that's being proposed this evening. Much of this information is also in the last couple finance committees. So Mrs. Miller, if you'd give Mr. Daubert permission to share his screen, I think he has some slides for us. Thank you, Mr. Daubert.
Thanks, Dr. Bolton. Okay, we have the, you have it? Okay, so again, thank you, Dr. Bolton. I just want to take a few minutes tonight just to kind of give you a last summary of the budget that we're asking you to pass tonight for the first time. There will be a second vote in June as required by school code, so. So tonight, what you'll see attached for the first time is the budget presented on the PDE 2028 form, which is the state required form that each school district uses for the budget to be, to be passed on and then it is sent to the state for, for their use. The summarizes, summary of revenue and expenditures. Tonight, we are out here on the May 5 column where we have a balanced budget of $143,812,26. It's about a 1.62% increase, both revenue and expenditures. And you can see over the last few months, the steps we've taken to bring those two numbers, the revenue and expenditure numbers together. A summary of revenues, in the May 11 column, our local revenues, $108,491,316, which make up 75.44% of total revenues. State revenues, just under $34.5 million, make up about 24% of the budget and a small federal allocation of about 825,000, which is just above a half a percent. On the expenditure side, the May 11 numbers are the same as the numbers that we looked at in April, and again, they totaled $143,812,26. The budget drivers this year, just as a review, were our, are the contract wages for about $2 million, the state mandated retirement increase, about 1.3 million. The tech school budget was about a half a million dollar increase, IU services, $474,000. The new positions, $455,000, and social security, about $151,000, for about $4.9 million. To offset that, revenue increase of about $2.3 million, both local and state revenues. The reduction in our medical and prescription costs of about 1.5 million due to the changes in the medical and prescription plans that have been negotiated over the last few years, plus the fund balance, which is very healthy in that fund. And also, we've cut about $1.1 million of expenditures throughout this, throughout the entire budget. So that's how we were able to bring our revenues and expenditures together. But as we know, we have some difficult times right now with local revenue, we went over those the last couple of meetings. So we have a plan moving forward in order to defer certain expenditures and create savings by not doing things that are in the budget if need be. We have some summer bus runs that we could save about $200,000 if the summer programs are online. Some deferred equipment of about a half a million dollars, mainly the purchase of the annual buses and also some equipment for the operations department and also some deferred maintenance that we would normally do in the summertime that could be potentially deferred until the winter break, until we see where, what level revenues are at. We also have some additional sources. If local revenues fall short, we're expecting right now about $472,000 in the federal funding from the CARES Act. That, those funds will also need to be shared with other non-public schools within the district based on the Title I formula, so we won't receive all those dollars, but we will be working through that as additional information comes from us, comes to us from the, from the state and the federal government. We also have a healthy general fund balance, about $16.5 million. That is unreserved and reserved dollars. And we have capital projects funding of about $13.3 million that is available, that is not already committed to other projects. So as we move through the year, we will carefully watch expenditures and revenues and we will make adjustments to expenditures as we, as we move through the year. So, and the last slide is just the budget calendar. We've come a long way since we started, I think this was three or four pages long when we started. But here we are tonight with the first vote on the budget. And we will also then have the budget adoption advertisement that needs to be done, that we will work on, we will do those things in order to be ready to vote the second time on the budget at the June 15 meeting, so.
Mr. Daubert, thank you. I just want to remind the board and inform the public that all of the expense cuts as well as all of the deferred or removed purchases for next year do not in any way impact our classrooms. All of the line items that are directly related to teaching and learning have been untouched. As he said, we did look at things like transportation and some operations, equipment and maintenance that we are positioning ourselves to be able to make those decisions in the fall or early winter based on the economic time and the economic data that we have at that time. So do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Daubert on any of that information in preparation for the vote tonight?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Daubert and his team for the work they've done. I know this is incredibly unusual times and you really don't have much in the way of historical data to look at to, to bring this together. So I can't thank you enough for bringing us a balanced budget to vote on tonight. I'm sure the public is, is thrilled also that we have a balanced budget and there is no, no tax increase as a part of that. So thank you very much, you and your team, Dr. Bolton, you know, you get some of that credit as well, you lead the team, so thank you both very much for this work.
All right, Mr. Daubert, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Mr. Rice, you had unmuted, did you want to say something?
Yep, I was just going to say thank you once again, I'm just going to reiterate everything Bill said, I don't have to repeat it, but appreciate it 100%, you guys, you and your team did a phenomenal job. Dr. Bolton, everybody, I really can't say how much I appreciate it enough, so thank you.
Thank you. And with that, that's the end of the superintendent's report. I did want to ask Mr. Miller before we move on to the first motion of the evening, Mr. Miller, if you could explain the adjustment that we're going to make to the voting process this evening, just to make it a little more user-friendly on a remote call. So Mr. Miller, if you could just explain that to the board and the public, please?
Yes, Dr. Bolton, with the acceptance of the board and presuming that no one objects to it, we've done this with some other Zoom calls for other municipalities and school districts. What Mr. Kraus is going to do is, once an appropriate motion and a second has been made, he's going to ask if anybody would like to be reported in opposition or to abstain to a vote. If no one is opposition or no one wants to abstain, then we can consider the vote unanimous approval. That means that we don't have to go person by person by person, I, I, I raise hands and so on and so forth, and I think it will be a more efficient and effective procedure. Everyone has the right and should have the right to both comment after a motion and second is made. Everyone has the right and should exercise the right if they should, so choose to either oppose or abstain from voting if those positions are appropriate. But otherwise, this will allow us to move through the agenda, I think, with a little bit more efficiency. There is one exception to that voting procedure, and that is when the budget is going to be adopted, I will ask Ms. Chenoweth to do a roll call vote on that vote alone. And so, fair warning, Ms. Chenoweth, who is always prepared and will not fail us. But with those basic outlines in place, unless anyone has objection, it's my recommendation we proceed in that manner so we can move through the agenda more efficiently.
Thank you for that, Mr. Miller. So we'll, we'll begin.
Mr. Kraus, can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Miller, we are also approving the budget for the Upper Bucks County Technical School, would that then also need to be a roll call vote?
I would prefer it to be so. Anytime we're approving a budget or a tax levy, I would like it to be by roll call vote. So thank you for pointing that out, I think that's wise to do it in that way. So Ms. Chenoweth, you're on, you're on notice twice.
Actually, you might want to make that three times because there's also something that deals with the Articles of Agreement for the tech school, which actually is even more strict than approving the budget, so to be safe, maybe we should just do it for all three?
I'm perfectly happy to do it that way, it's the majority of the motions that I want to move through quickly and I'm sure, Ms. Bennis Clemmons, you're fine with that.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
Great, fantastic.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clemmons. Okay, so with that, I have a personnel motion to make, and that is a motion, approve a motion that a decline in attendance in the physical education program compels the recommendation that the school board curtail the physical education program by eliminating five credits worth of classes. If approved, the superintendent will implement any staff changes in accordance with the school code and applicable labor contract. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Seconded by Mrs. Cullen. Before I open it up for comments or questions, Dr. Bolton, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I just want to note for the public's consumption that this is a necessary motion because of a decrease in the number of sections specific to one department, in this case, physical education. And so because of that reduction in sections, we are required to publicly approve this motion that then could lead to any personnel actions within that department that are necessary.
Okay, thank you for that. Comments or questions from board members? Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, so none, motion passes, 9-0. Onto the consent calendar, like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items listed A through H.
A second to that.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Comments or questions from board members?
I just want to state for this, you'll see within the personnel report and the EDR report, there are positions that are being proposed for the summer. Obviously, any of those payments for events that are not held will not happen. So this is an approval process with the hope that we can hold some summer activities, whether they be remotely or following health department recommendation. So again, after, anything happening after this school year will only be funded if the event actually happens. These approvals are just in case.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton, for that clarification. Comments or questions from board members? Okay, anyone opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, motion passes, 9-0. Committee reports, Mrs. Cullen?
Okay, thank you. The curriculum committee did not meet last month and we just have one motion for this evening, the final approval of a policy, and I'll read the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy 209, Health Examinations/Screenings.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second. Lisa.
Seconded by Mrs. Walters. Okay, comments or questions from board members? Anyone opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, motion passes, 9-0. Mrs. Cullen?
Okay, the next curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 1st. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Cullen. Facilities Committee, the facilities committee did not meet. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 8th. And we'll move on to Finance, Mrs. Davis Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. First on the finance, first up for approval is a motion, I'll make a motion to approve Contracts A through E.
Seconded. Okay, there is a second by Mr. Kraus, comments or questions for board members? Okay, anyone opposed or abstaining? Seeing none? Motion passes, 9-0. Mrs. Davis Clemmons?
Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the following one-time exceptions to the Pen Ridge School District Student Activity Guide Accounting Procedures Handbook, Items A through C.
A second.
Taken by Mr. Rice, I'm a little slow on the draw, Mr. Rice.
It's all good.
Seconded by Mr. Rice, comments or questions from board members?
Mr. Daubert, for the benefit of the community, would you explain why these motions are necessary because of the school closure and our procedures for end of the year?
Yes, Dr. Bolton, the, these, these three motions will allow us to continue to take care of the students' needs for the student activity funding, funds accounts. It will allow the kids to finish up their student activity accounts by having their officers approve expenditures instead of the entire group of kids having to be together to have a meeting. They will also allow for the students to carry over all the funds in their student activity accounts into next year without having the special school board approval if, if they have a balance in their account that's more than 25% of the revenue that they received this year. And that may happen a great deal since the kids had to leave so quickly and weren't able to finish up the things that they were doing. And it will also allow the kids to just bring their, or roll over their student activity accounts into next year without having to file the paperwork with the board, annual paperwork for the purpose statement. So it's, what we're really trying to do is basically pick up where we're at now and move things into next year, so it's there, ready for the kids and not require the kids to have to do a lot of things that they would normally have to do to make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kraus, you are muted.
Yes, I am. Thank, thank you, Dr. Bolton. Thank you for that. So, there's a motion to, as Mrs. Venus Clemens said, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Seconded by Mr. Cormac. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, anyone or abstaining? No, hearing none, motion passes, nine zero. Mrs. Venus Clemens.
Okay, next, I'll make a motion to accept an award bid and RFP results, A through I listed below.
A second.
All right, motion made and seconded by Mr. Rice. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, anybody abstaining or opposing? Seeing none, motion passes, nine zero. Mrs. Venus Clemens.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 lunch and breakfast prices. Set at elementary lunch, $2.60. Middle school, high, middle school and high school lunches will be set at $3.10. Elementary breakfast will be $1.50. Middle school breakfast will be $1.75.
Do I have a second?
Make a second.
Seconded by Mr. Cormac. Questions or comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, hearing none, motion passes, nine zero. Mrs. Venus Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. The next three motions will be the, the roll call motions. The first motion is to approve the 2020-2021 General Fund Proposed Final Budget as presented on the PDE 2028 form. Revenues and expenditures are balanced at $143,812,026 and set the real estate tax rate at 135.2555 mils, which remains unchanged from the 2017, 18, 2018, 19, and 2019, 20 fiscal years.
All right, I'm gonna second that motion. Comments or questions from board members?
Yes, I just, I can't see, so I don't know.
Venus Clemens?
Uh, yes, I, I just wanted to, again, thank the administration for bringing us a completely balanced budget with no tax increase, especially during this difficult time that people are facing. And also, for the flexibility that you've given in this budget to allow for changes and approve things so that as circumstances change, it gives us that flexibility to be able to do certain things or not do them based on the circumstances going forward. So, we appreciate all of the hard work that, that you've put into it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Venus Clemens. Any other comments or questions? Anyone opposed or abstaining?
Uh, Mr. Kraus, I think we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Yeah, we're doing it as a roll call vote. Mrs. Chenoweth will have to do that.
Open there, there you go. All right.
Okay, Mrs. Vanis Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walters?
Yes.
Okay, that's nine zero, motion passes. Once again, thank you for the hard work by the administration, Mr. Daubert's office. And back to you, Mrs. Venus Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Before I call the next motion, I just want to give a little bit of background information on this motion. Due to the current financial circumstances, the tech school is pooling 800, up to $800,000 for the renovation project from the savings at the tech school instead of having districts contribute that money directly. This is for the, this one-time expense. And by pooling the $800,000 from fund balance and passing this motion along with it that would suspend the, the Articles of Agreement, it allows the, it prevents the districts from having to contribute that money back to fund balance using the Capital Projects Funding Formula. The tech school has two different funding formulas. One is the Operational Funding Formula, which is based on in a five-year rolling average of enrollment. The other formula has more to do with the, the wealth of the district and the, the value of the real estate in each district. How this impacts Pen Ridge is we are at 40% for our contribution rate based on enrollment. The Capital Funding Formula would put us at 47%. So, this actually saves us over $56,000 for, by not contributing this through the, the Capital Funding Formula. So, I just wanted to give that background. And then, I'll make a motion, in light of the extraordinary circumstances resulting from the pandemic of 2020, a motion is in order to temporarily suspend the Upper Bucks County Technical School Articles of Agreement, Section 9, Paragraphes B and C, to A, transfer up to $800,000 from fund balance to the operating budget for use for capital projects only, and B, to suspend the reconciliation requirements of Paragraph C for capital expenditures in the 2020-2021 budget. And again, this would be a, this would be another roll call. And just one other point, because this is a, because this has to do with the Articles of Agreement specifically, this is actually required to have a majority vote of all three sending.
I'll second that motion.
Mrs. Dolan, second. Comments or questions from board members? Okay, Mrs. Cullen.
I just wanted to, you know, state a little bit of concern with the, what's going to be remaining at the tech school and their reserves. I know this is going to save us some money this year, but I do have concerns with the ensuing years with what this is going to do to their funds. And so, I, I want us to be mindful of that. And I guess, basically, to, to keep this in mind, this moment, that we are, we're doing this and the intentions that we have when we're doing it, so that in future years, we can refer back to it and maybe give some reference to it if there are difficulties, because I fear that there might be. I'll support it, but I am a little concerned about how we're drawing down the savings.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Mrs. Chenoweth, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Vanis Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walters?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes, nine zero. Back to you, Mrs. Venus Clemens.
Thank you. And the next motion is to approve the Upper Bucks County Technical School 2020-2021 budget as amended by the fund balance transfer.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion made and seconded by Mr. Rice. Comments or questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Chenoweth, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Vanis Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Dr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Walters?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes, nine zero. Back to you, Mrs. Venus Clemens.
Thank you. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 8th, 2020, right here on Zoom.
Thank you for that. Technology Committee, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rice?
Had to get back, had to get back off of mute, sorry about that. There was, our next, actually, there was no technology meeting since the last board meeting. So, our next technology meeting is via Zoom, probably, June 8th.
Wait, okay.
Mr. Kraus, could we go back to the IU report and see if there was anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Venus Clemens, I skipped IU.
No problem. Actually, the IU has not met since our last meeting, but we are scheduled to meet on Tuesday, May 19th.
Thank you for that, and my apologies.
No problem.
Okay, Upper Bucks BoTech, Mrs. Dolan.
Um, the Upper Bucks County Tech School, we did not meet, and everything that, we did have a Finance Committee meeting, and Mrs. Vanis Clemens covered what was in that meeting pretty well, so I have really nothing to report.
Okay, next scheduled meeting is, is June 18th, is that correct?
Well, that will be, if Megan's meeting's Monday, it should be the 19, 20, should be the 21st. That would be the Thursday following the IU meeting. I'm not looking at it, though.
All right, what's posted is, is Thursday, the 18th.
So, uh, so, Mrs. Dolan, it's June 18th, the IU meeting is May 19th. That's why this numbers are sounding funny, they're different months.
Right, thank you for that. Pen Ridge Area Coordinating Committee, Mr. Cormac?
Uh, we did not have a meeting, and I am working currently with Mr. Rice to put together a Zoom program for the committee, and we're scheduled to meet on June 25th.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cormac. Pen Ridge, the Educational Foundation, Mrs. Walter.
We have also not met, but we have a scheduled meeting for June 6th. So, I'm not sure if we're meeting via Zoom, but I will update when we have information.
Thank you very much. That brings us to old business. Is there any old business board members? Mrs. Cullen, you're unmuted. Does, do you want to chime in, or?
No, I didn't actually realize I had myself unmuted, but I do have new business, once you get to that.
All right, seeing no old business, we'll move on to new business. Mrs. Cullen, you?
I just wanted to mention that today, I was able to listen in on, well, watch some of the Pennsylvania Senate Education Committee. There was some testimony given, given today. Some of it was by Secretary Rivera. And then, they had a panel that had Nathan Mains, that we all know from PSBA, and then, the President of the PA Coalition of Public Charter Schools, Anna Myers, the President of the PSEA, Rich Askey, and the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania IU, John George. And I thought there were some interesting things from there. There was a senator who had asked Secretary Rivera some questions in conclusion to see what he was saying that he was committing to. And so, Secretary Rivera committed to, you know, no testing in the fall, that standardized, no standardized testing in the fall, so that students, the question was, are you going to make students who were supposed to take, say, like, the Algebra Keystone, for example, are you going to be making them take that test in the fall? And his answer was no, and so, none of that will be occurring. He also was asked if, you know, the state will respect local decisions, and he said, yes, of course, if they're within the, within the law, he'll do his best to cooperate with the General Assembly and that they would also, he also committed to share all data that's used to make these decisions about the fall and what's going to happen. He committed to share all of that data that's used in the decision-making with the General Assembly. And then, Nathan Mains had asked them to help, of course, with mandate reform. And we're supposed to be getting more guidance from the PDE as we go along. No one seems to want to speak too much to the fall. They spoke a little bit about the summer, saying that, you know, camps and such, they were hoping would be able to reopen with those guidelines being followed. And then, I had to get off the meeting to go to the, the meeting about all the senior activities. So, I was disappointed because it was interesting. If I get notice of another hearing like that in advance, I will let you know. I was trying to text and watch it at the same time, and I couldn't do both because I was on my phone. So, I apologize, but I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Other comments or questions from board members on your new business? Okay.
Mr. Kraus, just to, actually, just a piece, just a piece of clarification. I was looking at my calendar, because I thought we still had a tech school meeting this month. There is a tech school meeting on May 21st. So, as Mrs. Dolan was saying, it's usually two days after the IU meeting. But I, I do, I don't, so I think that was a mistake. I think we do have a meeting for the Upper Bucks County Technical School on the 21st.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. I'll return it to, open it up for public comments. Seeing comments? Mr. Keeler, are you, are you, would you like to? Mr. Keeler, we cannot hear you.
I'm nothing to do.
No, Mr. Keeler? Mr. Keeler, if you have, we would like that. Send a email to Dr. Bolton and my. Mr. Keeler? No, you're still not.
I have no question at this time.
I think he said he has no questions at this time. That's what I think I heard.
Okay, well, if you did, send us a note, and we'll be happy to address.
Mrs. Miller, are you able to mute Mr. Keeler then, please? Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? Hearing none, I'm just checking to see if anybody has unmuted the microphone. Mrs. Smith, do you have anything that you would like to comment on?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I'll move on to announcements. An executive session will be held following tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. And the next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 15th, presumably on Zoom. And we'll, we'll meet in this format again, presumably. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. I know there's no objection.
I will remind the board members that you have a separate link for the executive session. We will take a five-minute break and regather at 7:55 on the additional link. Okay, if you have any questions about that link, just text me. Thank you for everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.